Very good. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is August 3rd, and this is a special meeting of the Milford Board of Education. If you would all please stand wherever you are and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Griffin, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure.
Unmeet yourselves, guys.
Adam DeYoung.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Here.
Rita Hennessy.
Here.
Emily McDermott Souza.
Here.
Warren Palowski.
Present.
Una Petrowski.
Here.
Betsy Ratner.
Here.
Nicole Lawson.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Present.
And Susan Glenn.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I just want to set some context before we get into our conversation tonight. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to give Dr. Kutaia the opportunity to more fully share with the board her current plan for restarting school. I say current plan because September 8th is still five weeks away and things can change. So, this is meant to be a high-level discussion regarding the actual reopening of school. I want to remind everyone that we have a special meeting planned for next Monday, the 10th, where we will continue our discussion about the budget impact of the pandemic. And I also want to remind everyone that detailed protocols are still in the process of being developed by many different agencies, the school district, the Milford Health Department, the State Department of Education. Late today, I did receive an email from CAEB that mentions the guidance that the S. State Department is working on over the next few weeks, quotes. Some of those are muscements, educator eval and support systems, special education guidance, attendance, containment plans, scenarios and protocol, fire drills, food service guidance and student discipline. So, there's still a lot of specific detail that we just can't share or know at this point in time. So, please keep that in mind. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge the hard work and the long hours that Dr. Kutaia and her staff have put in over the last weeks and months while developing the best ways to bring everyone together to educate our young people safely in the midst of a novel virus. I know that many factors were and will continue to be considered. And while Governor Lamont and Commissioner Cardona have put the decision on a full reopening or a hybrid reopening in the hands of the superintendent, it is important that as a collective body, the Milford Board of Education, we provide Dr. Kutaia with our feedback. So, I hope each board member will do that as part of the conversation tonight. Personally, I can say that I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Kutaia and the entire staff of Milford Public Schools who work with and for our young people. She has said she will not open the doors of our schools unless she feels it's safe to do so. And I do trust that that will be the case. So, with that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Kutaia so that she can share some more details with us.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon and members of the Board of Education. I appreciate our coming together for a special meeting this evening. Tonight, I hope to provide you with an overview to date as of August 3rd, some of our work and conclusions and decisions that we have made moving forward. As Ms. Glennon mentioned, we are still five weeks out from the first day of school officially on Tuesday, September 8th. Things are happening so rapidly, information is changing. We're getting information that contradicts other information. We get parts of information and not the whole picture at times. So, we are doing our very best to put forward a plan that will keep our students and staff first and foremost, safe. But we allow ourselves permission to change our plans. The more information we get, the closer we get to the first day of school for teachers, which is Monday, August 31st, and for students, which is Tuesday, September 8th. So, today I'm going to share with you a few slides to help guide our work. And I think blessing you are allowing me to share my screen. Can someone let me know if they could see my screen? You can't.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
No.
Let me get back in there.
It's coming.
Yep, now it is.
Great. And you can see a full screen now?
Yes.
Great. So, again, I will reiterate, as of August 3rd, 2020, at about 7:06 PM, I want to share with you where we are with our plans for the restart of the next school year. So, this is just a little bit of, I want to build context for the board and the community. I know that you have read every single piece of communication I've sent home, but I cannot expect, thank you for smiling, board, I cannot expect that you would remember all the details of that communication. And things have just been happening so fast. So, I want to hit the pause button for a moment before we look forward. I want us to understand where we have been. So, on June 29th, state guidance came out stating that we were all to participate in full-time in-person instruction as of the fall. And we were to create plans to do so moving forward. June 29th was, I believe, a Friday before the holiday week of July 4th. We had already put together our task force in Milford, identified a scope of work. And we were just really waiting on the state to give us some type of direction on where were we going, whether it was distance learning, a full in-person or hybrid. So, we got the information about full-time in-person, June 29th, in a multi-page document. And I will say to you that we had on July 17th, a survey due to the State Department with questions such as, what percentage of students do you anticipate returning? What percentage of staff members do you anticipate returning? How many parents are going to take advantage of busing? Or how many will be driving their student, their child to school? And an estimated cost of what your plan will entail for reopening schools full-time. Now, I just want to bring your attention that we received the guidance on June 29th, and we were to provide all that data within a two-week period. And if you recall, a survey was put out to our community with not a lot of information as far as what the plan was. We put out the guidance, we put out it's either going to be full-time, hybrid, the distance learning. We gave some very vague information. But we were really under the gun with the State Department of Education to provide some of those data points. So, I know we received some feedback that some parents didn't know how to answer those questions. But please note that we were to provide the State Department with that data within that two-week window of time. And yet, a week later, we were to submit a plan. So, while we had two weeks to formulate some of the plan and then an additional before we were to submit it to the State Department, we only really had three weeks there to really digest the data, the guidance. And it being so far out from the beginning of the school year, beginning of September, that we built plans that we believe were the foundation for where we are today. So, on July 27th, the governor announces flexibility. I provided the state guidance that came out of flexibility to us on July 28th to this board and is available online. And since that flexibility, we have been required to, as of Wednesday, August 5th this week, to provide to the State Department what our plan is on reopening and a reestimating of what the costs would be. So, that is the history of where we've come with state guidance and directive to today. So, that's about a month's worth of changes from state guidance from full-time to flexibility on July 28th to where we are now this week on making an informed decision based on what we know in health metrics and our planning to date. So, part of our plan started with the restart task force. This is a diagram that I have shared with you numerous times. We started with these four work groups, but found in the last 10 days or so that we needed to change the work groups because of the information we received on flexibility and the planning that we were making. So, we reshuffled these work groups, reassigned some of our administrators and teachers. And it's that work of those groups that have brought us to where we are today in the four instructional scenarios, which was provided to you in a document and I'll be sharing with you and the community this evening. Oh, and to note, in an advisory capacity, I have been meeting with parents and community liaisons to discuss our restart plans as well. So, what the board received in draft format is a restart handbook manual, for lack of better terms, that lays, which lays out many of the questions that parents have about what are potentially some of our protocols will be, what are the rules on masks, social distancing, hand washing, what are the instructional scenarios? We anticipate releasing this draft manual to our community tomorrow. And I will tell you, it will likely remain in draft because of the changing nature of this work. So, we will be updating it on a regular basis. And in fact, fingers crossed, tomorrow, if not by the latest Wednesday, we are launching a new restart website at milforded.org that will incorporate all the components in this manual on our website. So, whether you have the manual or not, our website will now be outlined by these components. So, parents can have easy access to the many answers, to the many answers to the questions they may have. So, just want to underscore that our areas of priority include the guiding principles that our leadership team developed early on, probably in late June. These are the areas that we focus on in developing our plans. First and foremost, safeguarding health and safety of all our students and staff. While I won't read the slide, know that we have a priority in getting as close to full-time as possible in our schools because we know students need to be in schools as long as safe to do so. We really want to bring our kids together around opportunities of equity and access to different supports for our students and families and always prioritizing communication and making sure that we also focus on the social and emotional well-being of our children. So, these are things that ground us in our plans. We also know that we're not going to be able to do it without families moving forward. These bullet points are included in the manual, so if a family is interested in reading more about this. But we are going to need to call upon the partnership that we already have established with our community and family. And knowing that it's going to be really important that if young people or even staff members don't feel well, number one rule of thumb next year is stay home. If anyone's not feeling well, stay home, ride out the monitoring of symptoms and really make sure that they are safe so they don't expose others. We will have protocols on how to monitor your health. These protocols and many that parents are asking about and potentially this board will be coming directly from our Department of Health, our Health Department from Milford. In speaking with the Director of our Health Department, we're anticipating those protocols to us anywhere between August 14th and 17th. So, protocols that include potentially what happens if a child gets sick, what happens if a child needs to be isolated, what happens if a child or staff member, pardon me, an individual in our schools are identified with COVID. So, many of those health and medically-based protocols will come from the professionals. While I'm a doctor, it's EDD, not MD. So, we will rely on our folks in the medical field to really inform our protocols around those health-based issues that I know are very, very important so that we can respond, train and respond to that with our staff. And the area, SCL, social emotional learning, I want to spend a little bit of time here to really communicate that we realize that the mental health well-being of our young people and staff members are very high priority. So, I believe next week, our plan is to send out a survey to students of grades 6 through 12, and then the families of students K through 5 get about an understanding of what potentially some of the social, emotional, mental health needs will be so we can be ready to respond right out of the gate upon our return, if not sooner, to young people and families. We are currently revamping the curriculum, particularly the first six weeks of curriculum in the area of morning meeting and advisory. Now, we know that bringing students back for any period of time face-to-face will be critical in developing relationships. And we also know that any time during adverse childhood experiences, one of the key factors that are critical to a child successfully developing resiliency through that time period is the relationship of at least in a single adult in their life and not always mom and dad. So, we believe it's important to, at least at the very beginning, bring back young people so that relationship can be built within the classroom between adult and child and really focus on the getting-to-know-you activities, the emotional check-ins, and using some strategies, at least in the elementary school, potentially at middle, that we have learned through the Yale Center in the area of ruler, the mood meter tools and many other tools that we have already trained on. So, the benefit in Milford is that we've had a relationship with the Center at Yale, the Center for Emotional Intelligence, and our staff have already been trained in it. Our young people have already been immersed in that culture. We want time with them at the beginning of the year with this revamped curriculum and really focus on establishing that emotional foundation of strength and resiliency for anything that may be coming our way this year, including going back to distance learning. We're also going to focus on different advisory lessons in the upper grades, particularly high school. We knew we needed to revamp those, but these will be with particular focus on the pandemic and learning from home. We are developing transition videos, particularly in the grades of K, 6 and 9. But we also envision releasing these videos for elementary, middle and high so that families and our students know what school will look like upon return. We believe that because our families and kids can't come to school before time, before the first day, that these videos will be critical in transitioning young people back. Now, those are the activities that we plan for all students to help transition all students. But we know that some students will need additional supports. And we're ready to do that, not just for young people, but also their families. And that's where the role of the individual transition plan comes in place. This will help us really look at the individual needs of families and potentially connect them with community services if those needs go beyond the scope of our ability. And finally, we know that staff members are coming back equally with need. We're prepared to engage in similar activities to One Day for Day One, some professional development, some time to focus on self-care. So, we're hoping that these key features of our social emotional learning focus for young and adult learners will help with the transition. So, today during Governor Lamont's press conference, I was told, I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to watch it. I was in meetings. We were sent this by the State Department of Education. As Governor Lamont released these health metrics on how to determine if it's safe to reopen our schools. I'll give you a moment to consume this chart. It'll tell you that the color coding refers to the level of risk, yellow being low, red being high. And the leading indicator, seven-day average per 100,000 population, is the number of new COVID-19 cases identified. And then there are some secondary indicators there as well. Now, if you take that chart and you apply it to this next chart, which was also released by Governor Lamont during the press conference, again, shared with us by the State Department of Education. If you go to New Haven County, which is where we are located, our new COVID-19 cases are at 2.0. That's the leading indicator. So, I'm going to take you back a chart. And this leading indicator, 2.0, puts us in the yellow, which is low, favors more in-person learning. So, based on some health metrics that are current, we would land in the low-risk level, therefore favoring reopening schools. I will send this chart to the board. We received this late this afternoon. It wasn't released before the press conference, so I'll be happy to send this to the board, okay? So, what does that mean? In the manual that we sent to the board, on page nine is this chart. So, I wanted to spend some time on this chart. And you may have questions. I'm assuming that most of your questions will exist here. But on the left, you will see a chart, the column, that demonstrates really a traditional instructional schedule. These are our four instructional scenarios. Based on low community transmission, we would, in this scenario, bring 100% of our students back into attendance with a five-day-a-week in-person schedule. That means Monday through Friday, and it's a full day for students and staff. It's like, quote-unquote, "normal." So, a traditional school day. We built the three other tiers in the event that the health metrics, but also some other factors, board. And this is really important because I believe bringing students back is primarily based on health metrics. But I also believe that there are other factors to consider when making this decision that I have taken into consideration. One is the social emotional well-being of our young people. I do believe young people need to be in school with adults and with each other. There's a socialness to learning. Second, we also want to consider what type of instructional model are we prepared to deliver. All face-to-face in a social distance world is very different than the normal times because our students will be six feet apart, lots of different protocols, as I have mentioned previously in my webinar, and in some writing, written communication with the board. Another factor to consider would be the resources that it would take to pull off that instructional scenario. At our last meeting with the board, I shared some very high-level estimates of what we believe it would take to pull off full-time instruction, five days a week. And then the last consideration I think that we should look at is the availability of staff. Ms. Kapazna, Director of HR, is in the process of talking to staff members one-on-one based on feedback that we requested from our MPS teachers, asking if they foresee returning next school year. Based on that data, we anticipate anywhere around a 90% return rate, which I believe, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is pretty high. Again, they have not made that solid commitment, but based on very early conversations, August 3rd conversations, we're looking at about a 90% staff return rate. Just to underscore, in the very, very early survey that we sent in July with not a lot of information on our plans, we did get information from families that we are expecting about an 80% return rate on students. And anywhere from 45% to 60% of students' families indicated that their child would be taking the bus at that time. So, we hopefully will get more information from parents on a survey we plan to send on Wednesday with these four scenarios, feedback from families as to what students will be returning and in what format. So, tier one is an alternative to traditional instructional schedule. And it involves bringing back 100% of students four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, a shortened day for students based on a five-hour instructional day, which is informed by a model that the State Department of Education put out as a potential model for an instructional day during the pandemic. It is a full day for staff members, but a five-hour day for students. So, at the high school, dismissal would be 12:20, middle would be 1 o'clock, and elementary would be 1:40. Wednesday is a distance learning day. It's a full day for all students and staff. I'm going to explain all four tier, all four scenarios and then tell you how I plan to move forward, at least of today. Tier two is bringing back 50% of students into school at a time. This would occur under moderate community transmission. If you go back to the chart with the, that the governor released on health metrics, that would be in the orange row where transmission would experience an uptick in our community. 50% of students in each building would come back for two days a week and would be remote for the other days. Sorry, that should say three days, remote for the other three days. So, Wednesday is a distance learning day, and then you would be distance learning Thursday and Friday, making it three days. It is a full day for students and a full day for staff. Monday and Tuesday, one cohort of students would come in. Wednesday would be a cleaning day in the building, having no students in the building. Everyone would be distance learning. And then Thursday and Friday would be the second cohort of students. And again, it's a learning day, all day for all. And then tier three is 100% of students are distance learning. This would be when the virus has really experienced an uptick. There's a considerable spread, a substantial community transmission, and five days a week, full day for all students and staff. And we are building a much more robust and rigorous distance learning plan, which would include a minimum, and we say minimum because it's developmentally appropriate, depending on what your age, grade and department may be or course of study. 50% would be synchronous and 50 would be asynchronous. That's at minimum. So, meaning that students and staff would be much more engaged in a live setting. So, based on all the information that we have, I want to share with the board that, as of today, August 3rd, and I will share with parents in a letter tomorrow, that we plan to start the school year off in tier one. So, we will not be in traditional instructional schedule, five days a week, full-time. And we won't go with the hybrid tier two, which is what I'm hearing many, not all. It is all over the board in the state of Connecticut. There are many other communities considering a hybrid two-day. So, let me explain to you why I am, at least as of today, leaning toward the tier one plan for September 8th for our young people. One, I believe, it is an entirely new setting for our young people and staff to return to. And while some would think, well, if you're going to do four days, why not five? Because I don't believe that we should start as if everything is the same. Walking in at the same time, leaving at the same time, trying to implement the same exact schedule, the same routines, when we know none of it is the same. And if, I believe that giving our staff and students some time, five hours a day, four days a week, to get acclimated with the new protocols, get acclimated with the new schedule, and also that Wednesday, giving our staff and students and families, quite frankly, an opportunity to try on the new distance learning schedule. So that, let's say, the transmission is substantial by the end of October, and we have to go to full-time distance learning by the beginning of November, we would have had at least eight days to try on a 100% distance learning platform so that it is not all new and we're losing ground on November 1st because we're trying to go from five days in school to five days completely from home. So, the Wednesday is a nice way, I believe, to get everyone acclimated to distance learning. Also gives us time to do a deep cleaning of our buildings so that we have 100% of students in on Monday, Tuesday for five hours. Staff will remain the rest of the day. Clean the building on Wednesday, give students, staff and families an opportunity to try on distance learning. Really get deeply steeped in a much more robust system and schedule. And then come back Thursday and Friday for five more hours each on a new schedule. Of course, we are implementing new schedule, new protocols. And that sort of eases us in to potentially, if numbers look good. I know there are some superintendents talking about doing a hybrid for two to four weeks in September and then trying to go to a full-time schedule, five days a week, the first week of October. And that is something that I'll be communicating to our family that we should all prepare for all four of these instructional scenarios. Because depending on the community transmission, we can move from tier one to tier two if it worsens or if things are really good and healthy, we can move to a traditional instructional schedule. There really is no, no way of predicting what way the community transmission will go anymore than tomorrow, I think. There is no crystal ball. anymore than tomorrow, I think. There is no crystal ball that I have. We will partner with the Department of Health, a Milford Health Department, to make these decisions and getting informed on the health metrics, so that we can day-by-day watch how things are going and make decisions day-by-day if we have to. So I think, Ms. Glennon, I have shared the perspective on the scenarios, how we came to the scenarios, and how I plan to start the school year off in Tier 1. So I'm happy to take questions at this time and receive feedback from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Katia.
Can I stop sharing my screen, or should I leave this up?
That would be helpful, yes, so I can see raised hands. Ms. Ratner. Did you have question? Your hand is raised, Ms. Ratner. Do you have a question?
It's kind of a comment mixed with a question. I think it's a marvel feat that you and your team have put together, Dr. Katia, to go with this Tier 1. I love the concept of the mixture, so that you do get used to what might be coming down the pipe the next day, because it's so unknown, by having that in-person and also having the hybrid, having the online. The SEL gives me goosebumps because I'm just so thrilled that the morning meetings will be able to make the connections with the teacher and the children to be able to pave the way. My question is, how were you smart enough to come up with the idea, all of you, to go with Tier 1? Because this is just overwhelming. I would never want to be in your shoes, process to try to figure out what to start with. It's great.
Thank you, Ms. Ratner. Listen, there is no superintendent, I believe, that is prepared to make anything that has prepared them in their formal education to make this decision. So we are a product of our team and as informed by our task force. So we've had a lot of good people working on our task force to help make, help us to get to where we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratner. Ms. Petrowski.
Hi, thank you. I just had a quick comment. Again, this is a very challenging time, and I think that you and your team have done an excellent job coming up with some innovative alternatives. And, and I fully trust that you have the safety and health of our students and staff as number one. So, so I appreciate all of the effort that's gone into that. I did have a question on the five-hour shortened day with, with a full day in the middle. Are you, is there a concern about being able to complete the curriculum in a shortened day? Is that still going to be qualifying for enough hours for the governor? Like, I'm not sure how that all works, but is that something that, that is a concern?
So we, to pull off most of these plans across the state, we're going to need executive orders to be passed. So we will be looking for an executive order to waive the 180, 900-hour, 180-day, 900-hour requirement. In a superintendent meeting today, that is anticipated. Now, that won't come till much later, actually, potentially the end of August. So there is no timeline that we were given on the executive order. We should be prepared for a change in curriculum. There, there is no way you can deliver the same curriculum in five hours. We are working on a prioritized curriculum. And, you know, two years from now, we are going to have to do probably an assessment of a gap analysis on what has been learned and what has been missed. But we have to get kids, I think, if it's safe, get kids back to school, get them into a learning environment with prioritized curriculum, particularly our little ones. Because there are some literacy and mathematic foundational skills that I'm worried about, that we are going to miss if we don't get them into school. Again, if it's safe. But I do believe that if I can be predictive in nature, that we will be looking at a learning gap in a couple of years. That will be defined as, as the need for educational recovery. And whatever board is in place at that time with me, we'll need to make some hard decisions on resource allocation to try to close that gap as quickly as possible. So, Ms. Petrowski, good question. I just think that we're going to see the impact of this pandemic for a long time in education.
Okay.
That's just the honest truth. I'm not going to...
No, I, I, it is what it is, you know, we are in an extraordinary situation. And again, I think that you and your team have done an excellent job of communicating, articulating, and being creative with solutions. So, you know,
Thank you.
I can't imagine that anybody, any kid is going to come out of this ahead of the game. It's just not possible.
We're going to do our best to keep the kids just moving. Let's keep them all moving.
That's right. That's right. Okay, that was it for now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Petrowski. Mr. DeYoung.
Thank you. I want to echo what Ms. Petrowski and Ms. Ratner said. I think the creativity of Tier 1, when I think most were looking at the hybrid of being two days a week and then three days distance learning, is really a testament to your foresight. I mean, I think we've seen that throughout this whole pandemic, not just your foresight, but I mean your team's foresight. I think we've seen that throughout this pandemic and even before that. So I appreciate the thought about that. I think it's really critical because I do anticipate personally, although I'm not a scientist, that we will be back at distance learning at some point.
Yeah. And please, Mr. DeYoung, I don't know if I've mentioned this, but you bring this to mind. Parents still, all through traditional Tier 1 and 2, have the option of keeping their kids home for full distance learning. I'm sorry I did not make that clear, but what you said reminded me of that.
Fair enough, and I appreciate the clarification. I want to, I'm going to make my feelings known about this, but I want to be very clear that they're not directed at our district. I think our district has done an excellent job at being reactive or proactive in how we've responded to very challenging and trying times that the governor and the State Department of Education has put us, you in, really. And the, the work that you've done and the communication that you've done outweighs anything that we've seen in the state. But, that being said, I think it is a mistake for us to send kids back to school at all. I understand the educational piece of it. I understand the economic piece of it. Both are very important, but the way I look at it is health and safety first, economic, educate, or educational economics second. And while I do trust that the administration at Milford Public Schools, that the staff at Milford Public Schools is going to do everything in their power to keep kids safe, it is still concerning to me that we as adults are not doing things in person, or all things in person, and we're asking kids to go into a classroom sort of with an unknown, right? We don't know if they're going to be safe. We know we're taking safety precautions, but we don't know that those safety precautions are going to keep our kids safe. So again, I just want to be clear, I am not in any way being critical of what you've done. I think you have done a remarkable job, and I really love the Tier 1 option if we're going to send kids back. But to me, my opinion is that we should not send kids back.
Thanks for sharing that, Mr. DeYoung.
Thank you.
Ms. Will Pointon.
So first of all, I'd like to echo the kudos to you, Dr. Katia, and all of your staff. You've got no summer vacation this year. You are probably working harder than you ever have before. And I hope everyone throughout the Milford community recognizes that, as they absolutely should. Similar to Ms. Petrowski, I'm, I'm concerned about the ability of our students to catch up on the curriculum. I think you addressed that, the answer to, to that when you addressed Ms. Petrowski's question. But regarding the, the parents who are allowed to keep their parents home if they choose, will there be any additional support given to them to homeschool their children?
So, a couple clarifying points. So homeschool, and I know you know this, but because there's probably public watching, I'll clarify. Homeschool is something that a parent will indicate in writing to us, but that's an official withdrawal of student. So if you homeschool your child, you are withdrawing your child from Milford Public Schools, and we no longer have a commitment or obligation to educate. But if you choose to engage in distance learning this fall, then we have an obligation and commitment to provide, to provide education to young people. So just for the public who's watching, parents have both options, actually. You can homeschool and say, you know what, this is my issue, I will take care of it, or I'm not sending my child back, but I want to engage in distance learning. That's the first thing I want to say. The second, we are working on some creative solutions on how to get kids to engage in the learning that is occurring in our classrooms from home. And that, at the elementary level, is becoming, our team is becoming very creative in that we are cohorting kids. Remember, we can't put kids more than, closer than six feet apart. So that's requiring us to stretch our kids out across a number of classrooms. So we're cohorting children across grade levels, across multiple teachers. And our hope is to have students actually be able to log into a live classroom as it's occurring, and a student engaging in that learning as it's happening live. And then the additional support potentially could come in the, but maybe the time that teachers are there beyond the student is that there, it goes home, and then during Distance Learning Day on Wednesday. So we're hoping, and again, we're building both models, right? We're building this curriculum instructional model for who's coming back to us. Then we're building an instructional model for who's staying home, who can log in. So I don't know what you meant by additional supports, but we're hoping that they can live in those distance learning days.
Well, I, I know that there are many, I've spoken with many parents, and this will not be the first time of you hearing this for sure, who talked about that in supporting their children during the time of distance learning at the end of the school year, that they very much felt that they had to take on the role of teacher to, to assist our Milford Public School teachers in what they had to do. And I know for a lot of parents, that was extremely overwhelming. So I'm just wondering, is that something that we're going to address at the start of the school year? Because I am, whether, whether you're going to choose to have your child distant learn 100%, or just have them distance learning on Wednesdays, I am sure that there is going to be a level of anxiousness and expectation of what role parents are going to play in that, and need some kind of direction, if nothing else, to give them the sense of relief that, hey, you don't have to be a teacher with a capital T.
Well, it's, if it's not a capital T, there would certainly be a lowercase t. Because if you have an eight-year-old sitting in your kitchen, engaging in a class that's live streaming, you know a typical eight-year-old. They're, they're going to need some live support. It, it just, it doesn't happen digitally. So if there's distance learning occurring, particularly with young people, the younger the child, I think the greater the role of the parent will be. And that, that's just a reality we have to be able to talk about. That a teacher may not be able to monitor while there are 15 kids in front of you physically. If it is a hybrid situation where a teacher is assigned 15 kids in front of her, and then two at home, that, that, and particularly if it's a younger age, will be difficult to juggle. Now, the other model, depending on the staff, so you could start to understand the nuances that we're dealing with. We have a staff member who is teaching from home because he or she can't come, report to work because of their own health. There's a possibility that we can assign at-home teacher with at-home kids. The state is not allowing for certification waivers. Certification waivers expire September 9th, and we're not sure that those will be extended. What does that mean in plain language? If we don't have a second-grade certified teacher who's teaching from home, and we have a group of 10 second-grade kids, I will have to go and hire a second-grade teacher, or have them zoom in, or Google me in. So, and I don't have those answers yet. We, we don't know who's coming back yet. The survey that will go out this week is asking parents to commit to sending in or not with this information that I'm sending home. So that is, that is a very tricky nuanced answer. I'm sorry that it doesn't sound like I have an answer, but it's just really complicated to answer that. So we will do our best to support families. I know that there are some parents that want to meet with me around how can we develop a how-to-support-your-kid-at-home during distance learning, like handbook? And we want to work on that. But I want parents to be fully aware that you, particularly with younger children, you're not going to sit your child at a computer at 8:30 and expect them without support from an adult at home, and they'll sit there till 1:40, and it'll be like going to school.
Right.
I worry about that little piece. I really do.
All right, it's good to hear. I'm really glad to hear about the handbook. That's, or the idea of that, working with parents. That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the long answer.
That's okay. Very detailed.
Y'all set, Ms. Pointon?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Hennessy.
I don't really have any questions because what questions I've had, you've already addressed. I just want to commend you and your team and the task force for just working so hard all summer long, coming up with this plan, getting input from everyone with surveys, and trying to, you know, trying to meet as, meet all the needs of as many people as, as you can. And, and to Ms. Will Pointon's point about parents needing help, I think that's a good idea about Tier 1, is that students will be in school four days a week. Teachers have ample opportunity to introduce various programs and practice those programs. So there's some fluency, and yes, there may need to be a direction sheet for parents for that Wednesday at home. But when, when the data keeps changing and information from the State Department of Ed keeps changing and the goalposts keep moving, I, I think your whole team did just such a great job coming up with this plan. So I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. Ms. McDonough Souza.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Dr. Katia, I don't have a question either. I just wanted to make a comment as well. As my colleague said, I know there's no easy and obvious answer as to what the plan for the restart should be, but I wanted to recognize that the thought and the hard work that you, you and your team have put into this has been super impressive. I've only been on the board serving for a matter of weeks, but I'm very impressed by, by what I've been seeing. And you did say during your presentation that some people might be watching and saying, well, what's the real difference between having the five-day work week, or five-day school week and the four-day school week? And I admit, I was one of those people when I first was looking at the plan. But I just wanted to say that I thought you did a great job articulating the, the benefits to the four-day versus the five-day work week. And I, I support your decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough Souza. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler.
Hi, Dr. Katia. I just want to echo Mr. DeYoung's sentiments that, I mean, I'm personally not totally in favor of going back to schools at this time because, I mean, we've seen in other countries that it goes, that COVID cases spike when they reopen, but I think that Tier 1 is probably the best option at this point if we can go back. But I don't know if you're the right person to answer this question, but God, you know, say if someone does get, like, very sick, gets hospitalized, I just want to know, like, what legal liability is the district in if someone gets, you know, gets very sick? What's the risk for the district?
So we have checked with counsel on that, and it is, it lands in the same category of any other injury that we may have in district. We would go through the same process, so we're always liable and always at risk. But we have, would demonstrate the appropriate protocols and procedures and safeguards that we put in place. So it would, it would really fall in that same category of risk injury, injury risk. Attorneys online could tell me I'm getting that phrase wrong, pretty sure, but it would be the same thing. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to let the board know, I did confirm that also with our legal counsel, with Mr. Dugas, that it really is no different than, than any other situation. There's no additional...
It really is no different than than any other situation. Um, there's no additional. Risk factor. You know, it might seem that there is, but it's really, it it is the same as any other situation.
Can I state, um, Ms. Glennon, since we do have two board members and thank you for your honesty and feedback about not returning to school in person. Um, at the last page of addendum four, which you have been sent. Uh, that came out of the State Department on the guidance, the last paragraph and last sentence, actually, states. Um, well, I'll just read the last two sentences. The district and building level decisions will ultimately be made at the local level. However, should a district determine not to provide an in-school option? While in the low or moderate category, and by the way, we're in low right now. An exception approval is required from the State Department of Education, the State Board of Education and the Department of Public Health. Superintendent should consider developing a local structure to include medical advisor and. Health director and school nurse to consult when making decisions, which we have. But I want to under, I want to highlight. That if we do not provide any in-school option. We have to get special approval. From the State Department of Education, the Board of Education and DPH to do so. So anything less than traditional schooling and tier one and two. Would require approval outside of um local authority. So we were primarily told you must provide an in-school option if you're on the low or moderate. So I believe as superintendent of schools, I don't have the choice to not bring kids back. That is my clear understanding right now. That could change, but right now we have to bring them back in some format.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Kataya. Uh, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you. Uh, I I feel like I, based on just that last little bit of conversation, I feel like I have to follow up there. And say, uh, you 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 said you don't feel like you had a choice about reopening the schools there. If. You had a choice, do you think you would continue to follow the tier one plan at this time?
Uh, with what I um information I have today, yes.
Good to know.
That could change and I I commit my, I commit not opening schools if I don't feel it's safe enough. I I did um get called out by a parent saying you can never be 100% sure, right? Fair enough. Um, but I have to know that um I'm bringing 5,700 kids and 1,400 staff into a safe environment. And while it's never going to be 100% safe, it never was, right? You could get into a bus accident or fall off the monkey bars. Um, we have to be sure that we're safe enough. And right now with the health metric data that we have. Um, and the resource data, that will be something we could talk about next Monday. Um, I believe that tier one is the best route, but please know board and public who's watching. Um, that decision will change somewhere along the way, like. It it is predicted that it's it's going to tick up again the numbers. So. I again, I'm I'm going to say this till I'm blue in the face. Milford families should prepare for all four scenarios now. Now, be prepared for going full-time at-home learning now. Because it likely will happen this school year.
Okay, I I just want to say, um, I I want to go back to something that you were saying, Dr. Kataya, I think you said you said twice that you. Believe that school is the best place for students to learn. I wholeheartedly agree, particularly with uh the younger kids. You know, I I watched my kindergartner uh through the last. For the the second half of this past school year uh do distance learning and he struggled with it wholeheartedly. It was, he he tried, but it was. It was not the environment for him and and I think he he definitely needs to be in school face-to-face human interaction. So I. Absolutely support um using this tier one plan, uh, you know, as as you said, for now, as of August 3rd. Um, and I I love the the work that you and the administration has uh put into the social emotional wellness portion of the plan. And I was asking about that in our last meeting. I think it's great. Um, and just. Knowing that we have plans in place for if things get worse, if. Any, if there's any kind of turn, I love that that is all set and established and that. I think the best thing about this tier one is we have that one day, that that one distance learning day, right? For the, as some people seem to be putting, the inevitable return to distance learning full-time. Uh, I'm hoping that. That doesn't pan out, but I think this would make any potential disruption. Less of one. So I I I think this is a a perfect plan to follow right now.
Thank you.
If I could just chime in one more time, because I think this is really important to underscore, um, that parents do have a choice. So. There, it's never, nothing is ever risk-free, as Dr. Kataya said. Um, pandemic or not, nothing is ever risk-free. But in this situation, it's the parent's choice. They have the option to keep their children home. So we're not going to make everybody happy, um, clearly, but. Parents do have the choice. So I think that's an important piece for everybody to remember. Uh, Ms. Wasson.
Hi, thank you. Um, so most of my questions are already asked and answered, but as I was watching the press conference today from the governor. Um, I think it made a lot more sense to see like the clear numbers, the low, moderate and risk or where the third one was called. Um, my question is, do you plan to follow that to a T? I know he said that the numbers will be released, I think, weekly by county, like if. We're in the numbers for moderate, is that when you make the switch or can you or do you have to follow? What those numbers are? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Um, so while those are county numbers, I I'm going to stay in touch um with our Director of Health. Um, to make sure we have more local representation in that metric. And I don't think that there is an exact science to this, if we've learned anything nationwide, right? So while the number um may look better. Um, we have to keep an eye on what's happening in our 14 schools. Um, and I know that in the spring, a lot of our Milford numbers were um. What do you call it? Like residentially based? They were coming out of certain um populations. And um, we're going to work with the Health Department to try to determine the risk to our young people. So I don't know that there's a um something to follow to a T. So that's a good question, right? Because some people could say, look, the number hit 10. You got to close, right? Um, but then again, when we talk about risk and liability. And it's on my shoulders, if it says 10. And I'm not a medical professional, um, that's a tough call, Ms. Wasson. So. Um, I think we're going to take into consideration those five factors that I talked about in the beginning of the presentation, knowing that health metric. Carries greater weight than the other four. I hope that answers the question.
It does. Thank you. Um, and I agree. I think having the Wednesday to. Get accustomed to the distance learning is going to be really important and they can go into school the next day and ask questions and trouble. Even if they get a week of that and we switch to distance learning, I think it's better than.
We better get more than a week, but yes.
Yeah, hopefully all year, but even one is better than, I think, just starting out the distance, distance learning.
And I'd like to mention also in tier one, um, there was a lot of concern from parents on uh stamina of young people. Wearing a mask and sitting at a desk in rows. And I think the five hours is the answer to that. That and that five hours will include um specials, lunch, and hopefully some running around recess. We're still figuring out all those pieces. Um, and to answer Ms. Petrowski's question about curriculum at the elementary and even um at middle and high. We're looking at more integrated curriculum so that we're looking at a humanities block and a STEM block, which is great practice anyway. Uh, so it just catapults us in that area. So I think while we may, we will likely won't see a traditional schedule. Um, the five hours, I think, helps with the concern around people, the young people having stamina and even adults. Getting through a long day. And then the heat is a little bit of a worry. Um, I had a colleague today in another school district talk about. They're looking at if the temperature outside gets at a certain number, that they're automatically going to flip to distance learning that day and not bring kids in. So that's new learning that I want to take back to our task force and see if we can create a metric in that area. So the the shortened day in tier one, I think addresses a lot of concerns, the stamina, the heat, the ventil, the fans and all that. So I just wanted to throw that in as well.
Dr. Kataya, um, can you just go back and clarify um or maybe explore a little bit more fully the um. The role of, the role that you will play, the role that the Health Department will play in the decision-making as to when to maybe switch to a different tier. Um, you know, what I'm hearing you say is that you'll you hope to be able to extrapolate out in terms of the numbers. Uh, I think you were referring to back in the spring, we had a lot of um nursing home and long-term facility uh. Uh, positives that played a a role in our uptick. Um, so you're hoping to maybe be able to extrapolate some of that information out, that data out, so that it's it's a little bit more true to the school population. Um, and. Bottom line, when it comes to deciding, is it still your decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't want you to be hamstrung with somebody saying, you know, someone else saying, no, you can't close me. I mean, I feel that you should be the one making the final decision. So.
Well, um, let's be honest, though. Um, I I'm doing that with input from uh medical and health professionals because this is a pandemic, right? So.
Yes.
If this was a curriculum emergency, I'd be your girl, but it's not. Um, it is a health emergency, so I will obviously lean on our health professionals. And um, you know, our Director of Health and I have had a great working relationship. And particularly during the pandemic. So, you know, thankfully, we had that foundation of a strong relation, working relationship. So. Um, I I called, I I spoke to her before uh publishing our manual with the board on Friday and I ran by. The four instructional scenarios and and we talked about them and she can support all those scenarios. Um, in a public health perspective. So her number one. Um, priority would be looking at this through public health. So she's always going to weigh in on, so how does, what does this mean in the area of public health, the well-being of people in Milford? So then I have to take that and put it into, so what does that mean for 14 schools and all of our staff and students? So. It is a a a big factor, but at the end of the day, Ms. Glennon, as you're asking. It is the decision of the superintendent, just like it was, if you recall, on March 12th. When we sent out our letter saying we're closing and that was, remember it was town by town. It was like working its way up Fairfield County.
Was domino.
Right. And then the governor issued an executive order on the 17th, closing schools for at least a time period. So what the governor has done now is handed the decision back over to the superintendent within some parameters.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. DeYoung.
Thank you. Um, the the that conversation about uh nursing homes and long-term care facilities. Uh, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about. Um, what kind of information will be shared from the Department of Health? Uh, for instance, what I'm thinking of is if a student's parent is, let's say, a nurse. In one of those facilities and there are, there is an outbreak in one of those facilities. I know personal information, obviously, and health information cannot be shared, but will that information be disseminated to you? Uh, and what kind of information will you then pass along to the school community to let them know that? There potentially is contact from the virus in um within a school or the district?
So I'll semi-answer your question. Um, because we are getting protocols from the the Health Department between August 14th and 17th on. Uh, isolation, a contact, tracing, notification, when to shut down a classroom, a wing, a school. All of that's coming from our Health Department. But I can only base my answer on what we experienced in the spring, Mr. DeYoung, and that is. Um, when the Health Department felt like we needed to know, we got the call.
Okay.
And I think they are very careful in when making that call because it has a lot of implications. But they also make the call when they have to because there are a lot of implications.
Right.
There are a lot of nuances to that because you have staff members that work in different schools and their kids and then. Some people who live in other towns and so there's. All these scenarios that I have experienced our Health Department handling extremely professionally and well.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Petrowski, did I see your hand up before? Yes, uh, yes, you did. I just, um, I I just wanted to kind of put it out there. You you sort of said it already, which is that there's still the choice. To have your child be a distance learner. And for me, that is, that's the, um, if that was not an option, I would also be. A little worried about opening schools, right? Because I think that there are different. Um, different scenarios for different families. Some people have high risk and and giving that option, I believe. Gives everybody the opportunity to have their child educated in a way that's comfortable for them. So I I just wanted to put that out there, that 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 for me is one of the things that um that makes me much more comfortable supporting an in-school opening.
Thank you. And we are required to do that by the um, the directive from the governor.
All right. Do we have any other questions? From board members? No, Ms. Hennessy sent me a note. She lost her internet connection, so she did not voluntarily leave the meeting. She was kicked off.
Was nothing we said, I guess.
No, it was nothing we said. She's trying to get back on. Um, but if there are no other questions from board members, then um. Just a reminder that we will gather again next Monday, um, the 10th of August at 7:00 PM. Um, and the conversation at that time will center a little bit more on the budget implications. Um, and you know, that's something too that we'll have to just take a little bit at a time um as time goes on, I think. Um. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Ms. Petrowski. Ms. Petrowski, I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Mr. Fowler, seconds. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously and we are adjourned at 8:13.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your support and kind words. Really do.
Dr. Kataya, thank you to the staff as well, please.
Thank you. Yes, I will.
Have a good night.
Hi, everyone.